And welcome to this meeting of the Kingman City Council at 5:00 on June 16, 2020. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Linganfelter is excused this evening. Councilmember Mello Keener. Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
And Councilmember Wade is excused this evening. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst of the Kingman Family Bible Church. Thank you for being here, Pastor.
Father God, we thank you that you are present with us. And Lord, our nation is in need of your counsel. And Lord, we ask your forgiveness for times where we have ignored your word and gone our own way. I thank you for the city council, Lord, for our mayor and vice mayor, each one of our councilmen and women. I thank you for our police department. I thank you for those that serve us in our community to protect us, to keep us safe. Now, Lord, we look to you, Lord, as the author and finisher of our faith. You are Creator. You are the Lord God over all of heaven and earth. We ask God for wisdom tonight as decisions are made for everyone here in the city of Kingman. Bless them, Lord, protect them. We pray that you administer to their marriages and to their families, Lord, to their children, to their grandchildren. We pray, God, that you would draw us ultimately closer to you and closer to one another. We pray for places in America today that are deeply troubled and that are experiencing great difficulty. And we ask, oh, God, that you give wisdom to elected and appointed officials in our nation to know how to deal with these issues in a manner, Lord, that would glorify you and would meet the legal and judicial justice needs of everyone in our nation. We pray for our president today. We pray for those that served with him and alongside him. We pray for our senators and congressmen and women. We pray, Lord, for the judicial system and those that serve us in law enforcement. We pray your protection over them. And Lord, we ask for wisdom for those that would seek to pull down the rule of law in America. Thank you for the foundations. And the scripture says, if the foundations are destroyed, what can the righteous do? So, Lord, bless these precious people as they go about your business, according to Romans, Chapter 13, and give them wisdom, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Annie, do we have a picture of the flag so that we can have the Pledge of Allegiance? Yes, thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first order of business tonight is a call to the public, comments from the public. This is a virtual meeting, and so comments had to be submitted to the clerk's office. And because in-person attendance is suspended for this meeting due to COVID-19 pandemic, we are holding it through technological means. Public comments were to have been submitted in writing to the city clerk's office via email or by placing them in a drop box at the city complex or by mailing them to us. And they were accepted up until 9:00 a.m. on June 16, 2020. All comments will be shared with the council and made a part of the public record. Members of the public can watch or listen to this meeting live via Channel 4 or on YouTube at youtube.com/cityofkingman. Annie, did we get any comments from the public?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay. Then that information still holds for the next meeting if anyone would care to submit comments for the next meeting, although the dates are different. Consent agenda is the next order of business, and we have all matters listed here are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. And we have consent agenda items A through G. Are there any consent agenda items that a counselor would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item C, please.
Item C, okay, thank you, Counselor Staley. Any other items? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and D through G.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and D through G. All in favor, aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
There is no opposition, so that motion carries. Consent agenda item C, resolution number 5275, adopting a pension funding policy. The state of Arizona's public safety personnel retirement system is, as a whole, underfunded. As of June 30, 2019, actuarial valuation report, the city of Kingman's police and fire trust funds are underfunded by 47.7% or $31.4 million. To ensure cities and towns are addressing this issue, House Bill 2097 was passed in 2018, which amends Section 38, Chapter 5, Article 4 of the Arizona Revised Statute by adding Section ARS 38.863-01. It states that each governing body must adopt a pension funding policy by July 1, 2019, review and adopt the policy annually, and post the policy on the governing board body's website. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 5275, adopting a pension funding policy. Counselor Staley.
Yes, thank you. I really just wanted to hear from Tina. Since this was to be adopted in 2019, I'm curious if we're behind. I mean, we're obviously behind on this, but how does this change things for our plan now to sort of get this paid down? Does it change anything? I just wanted to get an overview straight from you, Tina.
Sure. Actually, councilwoman, we are not behind. We did adopt this policy July 1, actually, the end of June 2019, but we're required to bring it to you as the council to approve it and adopt it on an annual basis. So this is the updated version for going into fiscal year '21. And what this does, and we started this last year with that large one-time PS PRS payment that you, you as the council approved, and it allows for you to, or not allows, but it really shows to the public your dedication to pay down that PS PRS liability and shares with the public how you plan on doing that, which is not only paying down the annual required contribution, but also paying above and beyond by paying our budgeted expense, not just the amount that's required, as well as trying to contribute that additional general fund balance that we have remaining.
Thank you for that very clear answer. I appreciate it. Mayor, if you'd like, I go ahead and make the motion.
Please.
So I'd like to move that we adopt resolution 5275, a pension funding policy.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Counselor Watkins. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 5275, adopting a pension funding policy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? There's no opposition, so the motion carries. Okay, there is no old business, and so we will move on to new business, which is approval of the community branding plan. The city of Kingman contracted with the G O and Associates of Oro Valley, Arizona to conduct branding services. The final report and recommendation was submitted to the city on May 19, 2020. Staff recommends acceptance of the branding report and adoption of the brand strategy blueprint. Manager Foggan, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to thank our team as well as our consultants for doing just an absolutely great job on this. We're really excited about this and how we will be able to take the city to the next level on marketing materials for tourism, for our ED team, but also just for our citizens and for our internal team. And we're excited about having a new image to move forward. I think it really captures what Kingman is. I just want to let the council know that we have plans, starting tomorrow, to start seeing the logo on signature line items in emails. And we're already working on logo, adding the logo to new vehicles. So you'll start seeing it immediately, as of tomorrow, on all of our stuff. We will send it to the council members for adding to your signature lines if you would like to do so as far as your city correspondence go, and just to kind of show it off, because we're really excited about it and think that this is really something that the community can get behind, and it will be our new image for a long time to come. And so just happy to get to this point. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Foggan. Well, everyone knows that I reacted very positively when I saw that two meetings ago. So are there any comments or discussion before we entertain a motion about the branding strategy? Or did we receive any public comments, Annie?
Mayor, I did not receive any public feedback for it.
Okay. Does the council have any discussion or comments? If not, go ahead. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve our community branding plan as presented.
Mayor, I'm sorry about that.
No, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve the community branding plan.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Counselor Nelson, did you want a second?
Sure, that'd be perfect.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the new community branding plan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Oh, thank you, Counselor. There's no opposition, so the motion carries. Thank you again to everyone involved in this, because it's been a long process with a lot of public input to get to this point. And we did it. I'm really happy with our decisions. Okay, we move on to the adoption of a One Water Framework. Consideration of adopting the One Water Framework to guide resource planning and, sorry, and project development. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've talked about this several times over the last few years. And so our water task force has been working on developing their bylaws. And one of the things, of course, that we wanted to make sure that we included was the One Water Framework as we look at projects and we look at how we're dealing with our water resource. So Rob, Greg, was there anything that you wanted to add with regards to your folks' work to add this to the task force efforts?
Mayor, councilmembers, this is Rob. Essentially, this is just a philosophical approach to water resource management. It tries to break down barriers, because water is such a valuable resource that I make sure that we're looking at it across the board, whether it's water, wastewater, stormwater. So it's just a very comprehensive approach to water management. It involves a lot more people than traditional water management did. And so we just thought it was a better approach to help us address different areas within our water resource planning and project development.
Does our Water Sustainability Task Force help in the implementation of a policy like this?
Well, definitely. We have representatives from, involved in all the different aspects of water, water resource, water project planning. And we also are collaborating with the county on trying to identify joint projects we can pursue. So I think this is, I think our work with the task force is just what this framework is all about.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for Director Owens from the council or for manager Foggan? No? Okay. Well, I think this is a very important framework. And like you say, it's just a construct for how to think about integrating all of the water types of water when you're doing project development. And so if there is no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the One Water Framework for the city of Kingman.
Mayor, I-
Mayor.
Counselor Nelson? Counselor Nelson, I will accept your motion. And Counselor Watkins, you're the second?
I second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the One Water Framework. Is there any further discussion? If not, then I would ask that everyone in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, no opposition, motion carries. Thank you so much. Okay, and our last new business is a really important one, the resolution number 5281. They're all important, but I'm glad to see this. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT for the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange Engineering 17-035. The city has been in negotiations with the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, regarding the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange and North-South Connecting Parkway. The attached intergovernmental agency agreement defines the responsibilities for both the city and ADOT regarding design and construction of the project. Approval of this IGA will allow ADOT to begin the final bridge design for Phase 1 and to review construction plans and prepare the project for bidding. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan.
Boy, Mayor, you're absolutely right. This is something that we've been working on for a while now and working hard to get to this point. So we're excited to present this to the council. For a little bit of the project highlights or the agreement highlights, I think I will turn the time over to Greg Henry, engineer, to kind of talk to you about some of the specifics in the agreement.
Thank you.
Hello. And so the agreement is pretty standard as far as agreements go between ADOT and other cities. It is, of course, specific to the Rancho Santa Fe project, and it does define the responsibilities of each party. Primarily, the city is going to be responsible for completing the design plans, acquiring the right-of-way, and then providing any and all construction costs that are associated with the project. ADOT will be responsible for reviewing plans specific to their right-of-way. And ADOT initially did the bridge design for the bridges that will cross I-40, and they will be responsible to update those designs. There are new codes and new standards now, so they have indicated they want to revise those designs. They will undertake that work. There is a cost to the city to have ADOT reviewing the plans and updating the bridge designs and then taking the project till it's ready to bid. That cost is $109,027. That currently is just an estimate from ADOT at this point, based on the number of hours they expect to spend doing those four set items. And then if their costs do exceed that, and we certainly hope they don't, then the city would be responsible for any overage to that $109,027. If their costs are less than that, then the city would receive a refund. But we do have to pay this upfront, and I'll be working with Tina closely tonight or tomorrow morning to get some sort of check sent down to ADOT for this agreement here. So as Ron said, it has been a long time in the making. And staff, as has been said, staff recommends approval of the IGA, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions there may be.
Well, this is really such an important step in creating the foundation for our future, I think. But I wanted to just make sure that kind of the public knows that this IGA really covers the Phase 1 of our project for Rancho, and it covers the traffic interchange itself and then a short distance on south and north. Is that right?
That is correct. Yes, it will cover the traffic interchange and the parkway construction design from Louise Avenue on the south to Grand Canyon Road on the north. And that's about a quarter mile each side of the interstate.
And the majority, the vast majority of the funding for this phase has come from the wonderful work of Representative Cobb and other representatives with the governor and the legislature to give us the $20 million for this project. I think that needs to be said, and we're very appreciative. But I did just want to also bring up a few other things to highlight, I guess, in this agreement, because a lot of work has been done, as you say, a lot of work. And when I went through this, I saw that, for example, hiring a consultant to prepare the design plans and ensuring the standards and doing all of that work that's listed in 3B, it's done. That's wonderful progress. And then we're ready to move on with D, which is to submit the Stage 4 and 5 preliminary plans, if I understand it correctly. Is that right?
Yes. Now, the only, I guess, exception to that would be ADOT has not done any of the bridge redesign at this point.
Okay, that's the final, final bridge design they'll do.
Yeah. We're going to have a call with ADOT or at least reach out to ADOT to see if we can have some sort of kickoff meeting regarding this IGA here as soon as we can get one together. And we'll get a better idea of what their schedule is. I know they've already assigned a project manager to manage the project. We've been in contact with their bridge group. So it's been a few months since we've had that contact, so we don't know their exact schedule at this point. But we're certainly going to reach out to them as soon as we can and get something set up.
That's excellent. And I guess my final question regards the right-of-ways. I know that some of those are still being, I guess, negotiated. Is that right? But we do think it's, we're going to secure all of those rights-of-way that are needed for this IGA.
Yes. So early on, there was direction to, you know, for staff to proceed with a certain right-of-way, and we've done that. Some of the right-of-way is controlled by Sunbelt. And we have provided all the necessary documents for Sunbelt to sign and prepare those deeds and hand them over to the city for a council acceptance. The ones that are in the city's portion, we've acquired most of them. There are, however, four that, there are four property owners in this first phase that have been non-responsive. And so we've turned them over to Gus Rosenfeld, the attorney in Phoenix, to proceed with. And I understand two of those negotiations are going fairly well, and we might have some agreement hopefully in the near future at a council meeting that we can bring forth. The properties have all been appraised, and there's been letters sent and offers made. And again, the owners just haven't been responsive. The other two may require some sort of court action, but typically that can be done, depending on the court's schedules these days. I understand there's some backups, but typically the city can get what's known as an immediate possession of those rights-of-way. And that will satisfy ADOT as far as allowing the project to proceed and, you know, the construction bids to be commenced.
Excellent. Thank you. I just want to go through some of those items in here, because it's very clearly written, and it's very clear what the responsibilities of both parties are. And it's just really exciting to see it. Are there any other questions from the counselors or comments?
If I could, I'd just like to, first, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they've done on this. This project is going to have such a positive impact on our community, and I know it's been a lot. And so I just really want to say thank you for that. And I don't want to let this go without commenting on how important a project of this size will be as we go into a recession. To have something this big happening at the start of recession, creating, it's going to create jobs. It's going to be an infusion of money into our economy. And I just really think it's, we're going to see a different recession here in Kingman than we did in 2009, and this project is going to really make a huge difference. So I'm glad that the timelines are coming along and we're making progress. So thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Mayor, before we hear from anybody else or take a vote, I just want to acknowledge that it was pointed out that there's a typo that we will get corrected in the document, typo in 3B, as in boy, that we will fix before we finalize the agreement.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, I want to add my thanks to, I'm sure on behalf of all of us. This has been years of work, and this last year has been incredibly intense on this project and this agreement. So just thank you all. It's been well done, and it just shows the integrity of the work and of our relationship with ADOT. So if there are no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 5281, approving the IGA with ADOT for the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution number 5281.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Counselor Watkins. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 5281, approval of the IGA with ADOT for the Rancho Santa Fe Traffic Interchange. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, no opposition, motion carries. I feel like, yay! Thank you. That's wonderful. Okay, we will move on to department reports. And the first report tonight is the elections update. Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. In talking with Annie Meredith, our city clerk, we felt like it would be appropriate for us to give an update on where we are with our local elections, kind of timeline and what it's looking like. So I've turned this presentation over to Ms. Annie.
All right. Thank you so much for your time this evening, Mayor and council members. This is a really quick update on the City of Kingman elections from the clerk's office. So first of all, we just wanted to let you guys and the community know of some important dates we have coming up for our primary election. The first one is our last day to file as a write-in candidate is June 25th, next Thursday. Our publicity pamphlet will be available in the clerk's office and will have been mailed out to all the households, registered households in the community on July, by July 2nd. We will also have sample ballots available for those that want to come into the clerk's office and view them July 3rd. The last day to register to vote for the primary election is July 6th. You can do that with voter registration at the county, online at Service Arizona, or you can get a form from the clerk's office here at the city complex. Early voting is open and ballots will be mailed beginning July 8th. The last day to request an early voting ballot will be July 24th. And then early voting will end on July 31st. And then our primary election date is August 4th. Here's that information again on where you can register to vote, the county voter registration at 700 West Beale, online at Service Arizona, or you can pick up the form here at the clerk's office. And then you do have to turn that back into voter registration at the county. You can't file that with my office. This is just a snapshot of the candidates that we have listed in alphabetical order. So we do have mayor, which is a two-year term, and three council member seats that are open for election in 2020. The current mayor and council member terms that expire are Mayor Jen Miles, Councilor Travis Lingenfelter, Jamie Scott Staley, and David Wade. At this time, our mayoral candidate is Jenny, Jen Miles. And we have council member candidates, Sarah Ferry, Bill Franzen, Chairess Samley, Jamie Scott Staley, and Keith Walker. And then I just put in a note on there that the deadline for writing candidates is next week. And at this time, there have been no nomination filings for writing candidates. We do have two propositions that are going to be on our primary election ballot. The first one is Prop 416. This is a resolution proposing a permanent adjustment to the state imposed expenditure base for the City of Kingman. The descriptive title of that is pursuant to the Arizona Constitution, the City of Kingman seeks voter approval to permanently adjust the base limit of the city as determined by the Economic Estimates Commission. The city seeks an adjustment of $5 million. And that shall that shall the expenditure base of the city be permanently adjusted is the question. A yes vote shall have the effect of allowing the City of Kingman to permanently adjust its 1970, 1980 base limit. And it is not a tax increase or decrease. A no vote shall have the effect of not allowing the City of Kingman to permanently adjust its base limit. And again, it is not a tax increase or decrease. Our second proposition is Prop 417. This is an ordinance proposing a four-year mayor term for the City of Kingman. The descriptive title, Proposition 417, proposes to increase the term of office for mayor from two years to four years. If adopted, this change will take effect beginning with the 2022 primary election for the term of office starting December 2022. A yes vote would indicate your support of a four-year term for the mayor. And a no vote would indicate your opposition to a four-year term for the mayor. Some upcoming important dates for our general election. The last day to register to vote for the general election will be October 5th. Early voting opens and ballots will be mailed for that beginning October 7th. The last day to request an early voting ballot will be October 23rd. And then early voting ends for the general election on October 30th. And our general election date is November 3rd. And this is just the contact information for my office. And then if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions regarding the elections process or update? Well, thank you. I I guess my only question is, especially on those propositions about the permanent base adjustment, will the city give another presentation prior to the primary on on that permanent base adjustment? I know that there are going to be some conversations and forums in the community, but just wondering if that the city was planning to educate us one more time on the importance of the yes vote on that.
We need to really be careful about how we talk about that, especially advocating for a yes vote.
Well, that I, as soon as I said it, I knew I had done that wrong. But I think that the presentations you have given in the past that just emphasize the the reasoning for this adjustment and why the city is seeking it and the consequences of of the yes vote or the no vote, regardless of how you vote, what this means to the city. Or is that on of is that video going to be available on the city as we did in the past to educate public?
So Mayor, thank you for that question. We are in the process of putting some fact sheets and information together. We will have, as as Attorney Cooper said, we will have some facts to share and we're happy to attend any group that would have us basically present the facts as as we understand them. And yes, we will not be obviously weighing in one way or the other, but we'll have factual information available for the for the community.
Okay, thank you. With no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the next report, which is the Local First Arizona update.
Thank you, Mayor. We were contacted by Local First Arizona. And they wanted to just share with the city council and the community some of the the great things that they're up to trying to help our businesses in rural Arizona. Specifically, we're interested in how they can help Kingman, of course. And so we're is our pleasure to be joined by Kimber Lanning, who is the executive director of Local First Arizona, to to kind of tell us what they're up to and how they're helping our our local small businesses. And so with that, I think she has a presentation that she would like to walk you through. So welcome, Kimber.
Manager Foggan, thank you very much for your time, Mayor, members of the council. I greatly appreciate having a moment of your time here and look forward to to speaking with you. Manager Foggan, should I do a shared screen or did you have the slides to share?
We have it up for you. And if you'll just tell us when you want them advanced, we would be happy to help you with that.
Thank you. So I'd like to start by just giving a little bit of a background on who we are. The organization was formed in 2003. And then we formed a foundation in 2009, which is a 501(c)(3) that went forward and acquired the Arizona Rural Development Council in 2013. So in that merger, we became the state's Rural Development Council, which is a federally designated council that works statewide in rural communities on community and economic development. And we're thrilled to have the opportunity to do the great work in in rural communities. And we have a team of 28 people working on a wide variety of programs around the state. Our rural team includes four of us that are zigzagging the state at at any given time. So we're very excited about the work that you have going in on in Kingman and look forward to the conversation. So next slide. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is as we worked on the COVID situation from a small business perspective, we worked to develop a a small business relief fund. We recognized early on how many of our small Arizona businesses were going to be left out of the PPP process, especially in the first round through no fault of their own, really, a good number of businesses were simply structured wrongly to fit in to receive funding. So if you were a sole proprietor who had, say, just a few employees or perhaps even just yourself, if you were taking a draw from your business as opposed to paying yourself as an employee, then you were disqualified from that. That's just one small example. So we put together a small business relief fund statewide. We have assisted between 500 and 600 businesses, all of them with fewer than three employees. We raised about $1.3 million and we have distributed close to a million of that already. And I'm proud to say we have contributed in every county across Arizona. So in doing so, in speaking with these businesses for a really over a two and a half month span, we discovered there were some real needs that the business community need needed, some real needs in the community that were focused on how they were going to stay afloat through the duration of a shutdown, through the duration of a recession, et cetera. So we put together curriculum focused on triage, recovery, and resiliency, which we view as a three-phased approach to helping these businesses gain some momentum to get back into a safe, healthy reopening environment. And then I also thought I would touch base with you today on the economic importance of investing in tourism, which Kingman is doing an excellent job of, but I wanted to just share some additional ideas with you as well. So next slide, please. So as we think about small business support and the three-phased approach that I mentioned, the triage is really focused on helping businesses do an honest assessment of their business. Oftentimes, we have a business that is not necessarily doing well on all the different levels that they're they're operating. So they may have a piece of their business that is doing exceptionally well. And this other piece of business that they were either trying to grow or trying to revive. And that honest assessment will really help them determine where they need to focus their time and resources in order to have the most success. So an example might be looking at a restaurant that has, you know, a an extensive menu, a 10 or 12-page menu, helping that restaurant assess what their most profitable items are, what their most popular items are, and whittling their menu down to reduce food costs and food waste. That will help them survive in a lean and mean manner to get back on their feet again. And then looking at recovery, the types of resources, and I'll I'll dig into this in a moment. But recovery really is helping those businesses think about the steps they need to take to be safe for the public, to still be competitive and to, you know, offer their customers a high level of customer service and customer confidence at the same time. And then as we work through triage and recovery, those things need to be focused on resiliency overall. And how can we make sure that our small business community is thriving when they come back from this? So next slide, please. So examples in triage are going to be a wide variety of things related to opening those businesses safely. And we we worked hard at Local First Arizona to aggregate resources from across the country to get them out into the community, into the small business community in a timely and useful manner. There's been a lot of information floating around there. And oftentimes, we hear from small businesses that they simply don't have the time and wherewithal to dig in to do that research. So we did that for them. I understand Kingman has done a great job of communicating with their small businesses as well. If we can help support you in that endeavor, we we welcome any any questions that you may have for us. Speaking quite frankly, we have relied heavily on a couple of other states who have really taken a deep dive into resources that are helpful for our small business community. In addition, education has been a primary focus for Local First Arizona in thinking about customized resources such as the restaurant boot camp that we created, as I just mentioned, helping helping those restaurants reduce their food waste and food costs, doing that one-on-one education and outreach. And then helping businesses envision how they can pivot their business model. We have extensive examples from around the state of how businesses have done a great job finding new models to do new ways to do business, new models they can follow to stay afloat. And, you know, an example might be a company that decides, maybe it's a bookstore, and they decide to create a book club where you buy a subscription in advance each month. So it's a three-month subscription. You're logged in for three months and you're going to get two or three books per month. Those types of things we saw where businesses were incredibly creative in what they could bring forward to get dollars in their pockets while building and maintaining their customer loyalty. Access to capital was another critical issue. I mentioned that we started our Small Business Relief Fund. We were able to help businesses across the state. But in addition, there are other models out there. There are CDFIs, Community Development Investment Corporations. There are a wide variety of microloans that are available at very reasonable rates that small businesses can access. And then I understand, too, an excellent example is Kingman's facade sign and murals grant that you're rolling out. We think that's a an excellent model around the state and we'll be actually talking about that as as a best practice example. But again, we're aggregating these types of ideas and resources and getting them out to the small business community as quickly as we can. Next slide, please. So as we think about recovery, this piece of what we're doing is so important for businesses. Oftentimes, I think those of us that aren't in business forget how difficult it is to just pick up and start again. So an example that I like to give, you know, my my little business, I own a record store. Everything on my new release wall was four months old. And all the magazines on my rack were from February, right? That's just two simple examples. I had to come up with the capital to upgrade my inventory, figure out, you know, things that I would normally have put on sale during those months. And that's not to mention the fact that we shifted our business to pretty much curbside pickup and mail order only for a period of months, which meant that the inside of my store was a mess. There was packing material and stacks of records waiting to be shipped off every which way. So there's a lot that goes into reopening. Many businesses needed information about how to keep the public safe, how to do so efficiently and meaningfully, how to take care of their staff, what's required, what is the CDC recommending at the federal level? Marketing, it's imperative that these businesses are conveying, you know, now we're doing mail order, we're doing curbside pickup. Here's here's the process. If you want to order online, go to the north parking lot, whatever that is, being able to communicate effectively and using your marketing portals to tell the story of how you're doing that and reinforcing that loyalty. We saw businesses really step up on social media to communicate honestly and effectively with their customers to maintain those those loyalties. Rehiring, a good number of businesses, especially in hospitality, were forced to immediately let people go. This was before we learned about how the PPP was going to work and how long it was going to take. And so a lot of those businesses need some support in thinking about what is the new work environment? What are their you know, insurance vulnerabilities? you know, insurance vulnerabilities? And what unemployment benefits do they need to be considering? Especially with such heavy talk about revisiting this in the fall if we have a second wave of infection. And then finally, debt relief. We have helped a good number of businesses renegotiate with their landlords, find effective models to borrow money if they're in a position to do so at the lowest rates possible, steering them clear of predatory lenders and other things that will unnecessarily burden those companies. You have an outstanding SBDC in Kingman led by Lisa Card that's doing a great job in partnership with your Chamber of Commerce to provide this kind of technical assistance. Just know that we are here and we fully support, and if we can be an added resource, we certainly are willing to do that. Next slide, please. And then resiliency, as we point the work that is in triage and recovery toward a long-term solution, we're encouraging our businesses to be thinking about equity and thinking about a comprehensive approach that ensures our most vulnerable businesses don't get left behind. Working with councils across Arizona, we hear that this is a real concern. There are many businesses that are operated by people who would technically be considered low income, and they may not have the sophistication to apply for the federal funds. So, many of them may need a little bit more handholding. So, it's just something for you all to keep an eye on, to make sure that we don't leave them behind. Focused on financial stability and banking, you're lucky to have some local banks in your area that have local decision-making, and that's very important. Our local and community banks and credit unions are doing a great job of supporting our small business sector in a crisis. I think we saw them really pull through for our communities, and that's imperative that we work to partner with them in every way that we can. And then I list, you know, one of our favorite sayings at Local First is that relationships matter most. And if our small businesses are doing a good job of telling their story and talking about what they're passionate about, it's so important from a customer retention perspective. This is something we can do as small businesses to compete with online shopping. We can offer an exceptional experience, customized service, and just a feel-good, you know? If people know who our small business community is and why they do what they do, and the challenges that they have every day, it causes people to want to show up and support them. And this is also something that rural communities really thrive in because people know each other and they want to know each other. And in a crisis, those relationships will see you through. And then finally, sustainability. At Local First Arizona, we are focused on resiliency and sustainability. We have a green business certification program and other resources that business owners can use to reduce their energy and water costs while they build a more sustainable model going forward. Next slide, please. So, in summary, we are really working hard on these three-step programs for businesses to make their way back into a healthy economy for all of us. Really important, as you're doing, to invest in tourism right now. One of the things we see coming in the future is with more and more people unwilling to fly, we're going to see more and more people traveling the state of Arizona and getting out and exploring. You are well positioned to receive a lot of that visitation and a lot of those dollars. Certainly, if we could be helpful in helping Kingman tell its story to a broad audience, we stand ready to do so. And then finally, working on engaging employers. We run a TPM program in partnership with the Governor's Office. That's a talent pipeline management to help our business owners identify the skills that they need in their workforce and how do we make sure that the training is happening to get those employees the resources they need in order to be qualified to be hired by the companies that are in need of workforce development. So, that gives you a quick overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The final slide shows our team. And I certainly appreciate your time this evening. As I mentioned, Mayor and Manager Foggan took a moment with us about two weeks ago to have a conversation about this as well, and we certainly appreciate it. So, anyone have any questions for me?
Sorry, I was muted. Kimber, thank you so much. Are there any questions from councilors? I just want to thank you, Kimber, for the presentation. We've had a really good relationship with Local First Arizona. When you've mentioned the talent pipeline management, that jogged my memory because I know that you're working with Liza Nolan has been here, and I know you're working with Arizona at work on those initiatives in our city and county. And we've worked with you on other things. I think our ED team is very familiar with you. And so, just thank you for the resources you bring to the table to help our small businesses recover and be resilient. Everybody working together is how we are going to return stronger. And you're right, our Chamber and SBDC were very, very fortunate in Kingman to have just really strong partners that are helping all of our business community. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Staley as well for her support of the Kingman Main Street Program. We worked there to help get ready for placing a Vista there, which has been fantastic. So, thank you for the incredible energy you've put into the success of that program.
You're muted, Jamie, but I know you were saying thank.
I was saying thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other question?
You know, I mentioned this before, Mayor, but it is exciting, everything you have going on there. We really are proud to call you a partner.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this council, as we went into this year's budget, we realized that we needed to take the steps to help our, to address tourism recovery and really help our small business community get some tools that will help facilitate their recovery.
Yeah. I just wanted to say hello.
Hi, Kimber, I see your face now.
My network bandwidth is low, and I was worried that if I had my video on when I was talking, I would start and stop. So, just wanted to show my face and say hello, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you again for being here.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we have completed the department reports, and we'll move on to announcements by Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Manager. And Manager Foggan, can I start with you?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of things, just as a reminder, that we are still in 2020 census data collection. And so, just continuing to encourage people to participate in the census. We are ranked fourth in the state as far as response, which we are very proud of, and would love to be one, two, or three. We're continuing to concentrate on our lower count areas. We'll be doing some more door hangers and education pieces there. So, that's my census report. And then just a reminder that we have a very important five-minute meeting to approve the budget. We had to move that. It's a special meeting anyway, but based on our advertising requirements, we will be doing that as a virtual meeting and hope that all of the elected officials can attend that so we can get the budget approved. It has to be approved by before July 1st. And just a quick update, we've been trying to put together a special meeting on the development agreement with Sunbelt. I had received an email today from Sunbelt Development indicating that they feel like they can have the entire agreement ready for next week. So, we're going to kind of scrap our executive session effort for this week and work on a new doodle poll that will go out to the council for a couple of choices next week. So, just wanted everybody to be aware of that. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager. Counselor Watkins?
Thanks, Mayor. I actually really don't have anything. I appreciate the update from Ron. Like, I was thinking about that on the census, and so I was wondering how we were doing as a city. And I'm glad to hear that we're number four in the state. That's actually pretty good. I was wondering how we are ranking with other rural cities? And are we, or is that, is that? Anyway, Ron, I guess you could share some more with that.
We're ahead. And more importantly, we're ahead of Lake Havasu.
Well, that and Bullhead City too, I hope.
They're not even competition.
Well, thanks. I appreciate all the work on that. And of course, I continue to thank staff and all those who work for the city for all they do.
Thank you, Director Counselor. Counselor Staley?
Yes, since Manager Foggan didn't mention it, I want to let everybody know that there will be a fireworks show. Yeah, see, I'm going to steal your thunder. It's going to happen. I love the fireworks, and I know that we don't have all the details of how that will work yet, but you will at least have fireworks. And the other thing is I want to encourage everyone to go out and see the White Cliffs Trail, the wagon trails. There's been a new addition with a sign that includes our rich history and what the wagon trails are all about. And you just have to go downtown, and you get on Lead Street, and follow it around, and you'll get back to the most beautiful area, one of many beautiful areas in town. But I really encourage everyone to see that and want to thank the Parks Department for getting that additional piece out there because it's, we can't celebrate our history if people forget about it, and this is really great. So, those are my things.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Nelson?
I have nothing on this side at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Melo Keener?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, okay. I don't think I forgot anybody. I'm trying to think. Okay, for my announcements, I'm going to ask the council and staff to indulge me just a moment because I want to address an issue that has come to Manager Foggan and to me in volume over the last week or so. And it addresses the Black Lives Matter. And first, I want to start by giving a huge commendation to everyone in our staff and especially the Police Department, Chief Cooper, and all the wonderful coordination he did. And then also implementing an emergency response type of system that was so effective. And just all of our police officers who acted so responsibly and respectfully. And for all the people in the park who were all so respectful and did, you know, all the right things to exercise rights without violence or wrongdoing in that situation. Having said that, we know that it's not like that everywhere in the country. And today I was very saddened to hear of the shooting in Albuquerque for a protest of a protester by a civilian militia. And the reason I mention that is to just illustrate how this can and could go out of control in a heartbeat. And we didn't have that happen, and I'm just so thankful and so grateful for that, for everyone in our community. But there have been calls to action for me, for the city council, for Manager Foggan. And the reason I bring this up is because because we wanted to make sure that the council is aware of this and has knowledge that there are people on both sides of this issue have called us to action. And I'm going to mention two people because they're, they kind of have led a campaign to the city and created templates to give us lots. I think some of us have seen these where you get a lot of emails that may be replicated, but our citizens wrote these. And so, the first one was from a young man, and it's been in the newspaper. It was his community viewpoint, Dominic Tapia. And he actually wanted the city to take action to counter the business that has a Confederate flag downtown. This is not a new subject for most of us. But putting a flag in our park to demonstrate that a Black Lives Matter flag or something of that nature. And he wrote this letter asking other people to contact us. And I did just, I told Manager Foggan I was going to read both of these letters tonight, but it would take up a lot of time. And, but we have them available for you if you want to read them, or they're in the paper. But his point is that he would like the city to take action to do something monument, of a monument nature in the park. And the counter to that came from one of our citizens along. I should mention Dominic Tapia is, he was a Kingman High School graduate. He was a student Rotarian. He went to, he's about to enter medical school. He's, you know, he's just very, very concerned and just as the people who organized the demonstrations were, you know, they want some actions. So, but the open letter that came from Mr. Alexander, who owns Thunder Road is several pages long, and I'm not going to read it tonight. But his call is to that he has, well, to do, to not do that. And and that he has a right to demonstrate, to have this flag on his private property. And and it goes on, and he brings up the Antifa and other things that we heard a lot of during this past couple of weeks. But basically, defending his position to have that flag. So, as I say, both of these are community viewpoints. They're in our Kingman Minor. And I'm not going to read them. But I am going to say that Manager Foggan and I discussed these quite a few times now because I have received a lot of emails with this, both sides, as has he, and perhaps you have too, but I'm just speaking from my experience here. And and here, the thing is, both of, both Manager Foggan and I believe that we have to really prioritize the mission of the city, which is the health, safety, security, and rights of every person in this city. And so, both of these people who wrote us and everyone that they represent, we have to take care of all of them, and we have, we've demonstrated that. But the other thing is it's time to de-escalate. It's not a position for the city to try to take sides at this point. We, or even escalate tension in this city. There was a shooting in our next-door neighbor state today. And it's time to do what our police did, show respect, show tolerance, and be protective while allowing people to do the right things as they see it, as long as it's within their constitutional and legal rights. So, what I'm saying tonight and announcing, I guess, is that the position of the city at this time, and I'm responding to all of these calls for action, is that we are going to maintain a steadfast dedication to our citizens, all of them. We're not prepared to take action on that would escalate tensions in our city parks. People have, can do their, you know, point, counterpoint on their personal properties or their businesses and do. But our position is that as a city, we are going to uphold those that we took But our position is that as a city, we are going to uphold the oaths that we took to allow people to exercise their rights, but at this time, to maintain decorum and civility to the very best that we can. I'm just, if it were an issue like police practices or something that we have direct control over, we'd be the first ones to be addressing it. But I am so thankful. I think our city is so up the curve and so beyond the curve in already taking steps to have excellent policing practices. And our advertising campaign of the last few years of Turn Your Kindness Into a Career demonstrates the attitude and the intention of how we will practice policing measures in Kingman, Arizona. But that's how, that's where we came down. I guess that's what to say about this. There is a lot of rhetoric, and I will say in Mr. Alexander's letter, there's a lot of inflammatory rhetoric. And I decided not to read that because it really disturbs me to read. At the same time, I know he cares about his customers, he cares about his business and is a part of this community. So, but I would ask to tone down the rhetoric. It's the rhetoric that inflames things. Even before those days that we had peaceful demonstrations, all the rhetoric of what was going to happen, who was coming in, who these bad people are. There are agitators. There really are, and I know that. But we didn't have them coming here, and they certainly weren't our people, our citizens in the park. And if we can reduce the rhetoric, I think it will really help all of us enjoy the beauty and the wonderfulness of our city. Manager Foggan, is there anything else that you want to add on this, or have I beat it to death?
Great announcement, Mayor.
Okay. Well, that's the end of my announcements. So I'll move on to the requests for future reports and updates. Are there any council requests for future reports and updates?
Mayor, I have two.
Please.
First, I would like to ask for an update on the Kingman Crossing interchange. And I'd also like to ask for an update on the draft site. We haven't heard about where we are at on that in a while, and I thought things were moving along faster, but it seems to be delayed. So if you could let us know on that one as well, those are the two things I have tonight. Thank you.
Those are good ones. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Well, then at this time, that's the end of our business, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. No opposition. Motion carries. Good night, everyone.